Thank you Samantha, warm welcome to those who have just joined us. My name is Ken, I'm a senior research analyst with CATS and I'll be the facilitator for this session. Just on extremism, hate and disinformation. So to our friends who are joining us from various parts of the world, we are very happy to have you with us. I hope you're excited for this lineup of presentations that we have. So just a bit of a reminder for everyone, please do not record or reproduce any content from the presentations that's in here. For example, on social media. And nevertheless, if there's non-sensitive content, you are free to encourage to share your experiences and thoughts on our social media. By our hashtags, ACOB22. So secondly, if you're doing this on the conference platform, please feel free to add in the comments in the chat function. If you're experiencing any technical difficulties with the online platform, you may reach out to our organising team in the chat. And lastly, if you have any questions that you want to ask the presenters, please type it in in the Q and A panel. So that means there's the comments are for the chat function, whereas the questions are for the Q and A functions. So for the questions, you may also wish to have questions posed by others that you would like to have answered. And if you need any further information on how to do so, you may access the guide that is uploaded on the platform. And so for today's session, we have a total of three presentations with each presentation lasting a total of fifteen minutes. Our speakers are live with us and they will be taking questions from the audience in the combined ten minute Q and A portion at the end of this special section. Unfortunately for our first speaker, Miss Ang Lee Ling, she will not be able to attend the Q and A. Hence, if you have any burning questions for her, please feel free to contact the ACOB committee and we'll send them your questions. And again, we encourage all attendees to post any questions or comments that you may have for the presentations via the Q and A attack. So without further ado, it's my honour to introduce the first presenter for this session. Miss Ang Lee Ling is a psychologist with the Counter Terrorism Research Division within the Ministry of Home Affairs Singapore. She works with a team of psychologists undertaking psychological reassessments, offering counselling services and managing the rehabilitation programmes for individuals detained for terrorism-related conduct and those under the supervision regime, including self- radicalised individuals. The team also conducts psychological research of direct application in the field of counter-terrorism. And for her presentation, is one of the descriptions. So in recent years, Singapore has observed a growing number of self- radicalised youths who were influenced by violent extremist materials online. So in this presentation, through an examination of the case studies of radicalised youth in Singapore, this presentation will try to provide an understanding of various social psychological factors, triggers and motivations that contribute to this youth being drawn to such radical and violent ideologies and implications on a youth-centric rehabilitation framework and counter-ideology outreach efforts will also be discussed. So for the next presentation, we have is by Miss Hong Ting Min. Hong Ting Min is a psychologist with the Resilience, Safety and Security Psychology Branch of the Hongking Behavioural Sciences Centre. Her research areas include understanding violent extremism, hate crimes and hate speech from a behavioural sciences and psychological perspective. She also conducts trainings to enhance the operational effectiveness of officers from various government agencies. So for her presentation, she'll be looking at how hate incidents can actually fragment communities and damage the social fabric of our society. So in particular, the rise of racial and religious hate incidents in the past year have actually illustrated that race and religion matters continue to remain to be the most critical fault lines in Singapore. And as such, this study explores the hate incidents from a social cohesion and security angle. So implications for policymakers and practitioners will be discussed. Without further ado, we will begin the presentation, Miss Hong Ting Min, please.
Hi everyone, thanks for joining us today. I'm Ting Min, a psychologist from the Hongking Behavioural Sciences Centre. And today I'll be talking about a pilot study that we did on the experiences of hate in Singapore, specifically from a psychological and behavioural sciences perspective. Okay, so just a few covers to go through before going into the actual study itself. So this is really a primary study on the experiences of hate incidents in Singapore. There may be some sensitive content shown on the slides. So if you feel uncomfortable at any point in time, feel free to look away or take a break if you need to. The views expressed in the presentation do not represent or imply the official views of MHA and all examples and pictures used are purely for illustrative and learning purposes only, we do not endorse any of them. So going into the scope of today's sharing, first I'll be going through the background of the study, you know, what is hate? Why are we studying hate incidents? Then I'll briefly go through the methodology of our study and as well as some key findings that we have found. And last but not least, we'll leave a few, some recommendations on what we can do moving forward. So I've been, you know, using a word hate for quite a few slides really. You may be wondering, what am I exactly referring to when I say hate incidents? So to be honest, there isn't actually any standardised definition of a hate incident across the group. But for the purpose of our study, we, a hate incident refers to any act against a person or property that is motivated in whole or in part by an offender's bias against the victim's presumed membership to a social group or demographic. So this is actually a mouthful, so let me break it down for you. Basically, any act, whether it's criminal or non-criminal, as long as it is motivated by bias, you know, against the victim's group membership, so group membership can be in terms of race or religion or gender or anything along the lines of group membership, then we will call it a hate incident. So perhaps the first thing that comes to mind in terms of hate incidents in Singapore would be those that are based on race. So one key example would be what happened last year where this Indian lady was actually kicked by a Chinese man when she was walking on the streets. We also have hate incidents that are based on religious bias. So for example, here we see a Chinese woman, who was actually intentionally disrupting her neighbour from his mid-priestries basically. So from these two examples alone, you can, you may notice that hate incidents can vary quite a bit, right? The left one involves physical violence, you see physical injuries, but the right one is just plain annoyance. There wasn't any physical harm involved. And indeed, hate can actually manifest itself in many different ways. And a good way of presenting this is to use a pyramid of hate, yeah. So as you move out of the pyramid, hate actually evolves on something that is seemingly innocuous, like insensitive remarks, insensitive jokes, things like that, to something that can actually cause life-threatening or physical consequences. So this will include things like murder, rape, terrorism even. So the one big reason why we are interested in hate incidents is because it can cause significant impacts on the victims' individual and individual level as well as on the societal level. So going back to the example of the Indian lady, right? Subsequently, her daughter actually made an Insta story post, which is what you are seeing here. And he talked about how, you know, the victim was so shaken, she was crying, she was bleeding and eventually she even became afraid of taking a walk in her own country. So all these examples actually, they serve as a reminder for us that race and religion remain to be critical fault lines in Singapore. In fact, in 2020, the number of police reports that involve R and R incidents actually doubled. But we are not only interested in this kind of prosecutable criminal kinds of hate incidents, we are also looking into more everyday forms of hate incidents, which brings me to the next part, which is on our research questions. So we have outlined three main research questions. The first has to do with prevalence, specifically what are the different types of incidents that we see in Singapore? Where, where do they occur? Who are they being perpetrated by? So contextual cues like this as well. We are also interested in the psycho-social impacts of hate incidents at an individual level on the victims as well as at a community level. And last but not least, we are also looking at the ways of management and intervention for hate, specifically zooming into the role of law enforcement. But due to time constraints, I would mostly be covering the first and the third point. Okay, going to our methodology, so we conducted an online survey and collected five hundred and thirty responses. And basically, you can see the demographics of our respondents. As you can see here, you know, the age groups, we have a baby age group ranging from eighteen years old all the way to eighty-one years old in terms of gender. And I've quite even split between females and males and in terms of nationality, most of our participants are also Singaporeans and some are Singaporean. In terms of race, our sample is actually pretty representative of the national demographics. Okay, and in terms of religion, we also have respondents from different religious backgrounds, so these are some examples. Okay, so going to our first key finding, which is on the prevalence of hate incidents, specifically in our questionnaire, we actually asked about the difference frequent, how frequently experience the different types of incidents in the past three years. So four key themes were actually identified and they are listed in the boxes here that you see. And they actually neatly fall into the different pyramid levels as well. So going into the first type of incident, we have avoidance and exclusion. So this type of incident is usually indicated by facial expression or body language, right? So things like changing seats when someone comes close to you or using a language that some of the victim does not understand. So all these can indicate avoidance or exclusion. And around half of our respondents actually experienced that in the past three years. Moving on, we also have insensitive remarks or actions and this can be intentional or unintentional in causing hurt for the victims. But usually these are insensitive because they reflect an underlying stereotype. For example, you know, associating a race or a religion with terrorism or commenting about a racial, a skin colour of a certain race, yeah. So interestingly, most of our participants, more than half, actually have experienced insensitive remarks or actions in the past three years. Going a step up the pyramid, we have verbal abuse. So the difference between this and insensitive remarks is that verbal abuse, they are out there to cause harm to the victim. So this would usually include things like slurs, vulgarities, derogatory names, it's clear cut that it's out there to cause harm basically. So verbal abuse can take place online or offline. And so some key comment was that we saw, you know, ugly, smelly, using crude language, using vulgarities, things like that. And then we also looked into discrimination, in fact, we looked at it in the different specific contexts. So we have discrimination in terms of housing and discrimination in terms of education as well as employment. So we also have respondents who reported physical assault. So thankfully, physical assault is actually much lower, much less frequent than the other types of incidents that we have seen in the previous slides. Okay, so for the motivations of hate, the top three biases that we see thus far include race, SES, as well as religion. And this would then also reflect the critical fault lines in Singapore as well. For the location of incidents, most of them actually occur at work, a large percentage of them occur at work. Which also includes new job interviews, followed by online platforms and also followed by on public transport. Okay, for in terms of the relationship between the victim and the perpetrator, the most common types of perpetrator that we see thus far are still the strangers, the offline strangers and also online strangers. And then followed by colleague and classmate. So but what is, what may be more interesting to you is the differences in experiences across the different age and race. So younger, we found that younger individuals tend to experience more frequent types of, more frequent experiences of all the different types of incidents, ranging from avoidance all the way to physical assault. The younger individuals reported more of them, yeah. In terms of race, Chinese were also less likely than Malays and Indians to have experienced racial or religious motivated hate incident. Moving on to our next key finding, which has to do with the management and interventions. So we actually asked our respondents, no, what are some common ways in which you will resolve hate incidents by yourself? And the most common way that we got was actually to do nothing at all, yeah, so to ignore the whole incident. Besides that, people, respondents also indicated that they would report the incident to the law enforcement officer or it could also be a figure of authority like their boss or supervisor. Yeah, many of them also talked to friends or family about their own grievances, right? Yeah. And so another very related point is what are some challenges that they face when resolving pain incidents? And this is very closely tied to why many of them chose inaction, yeah. So the most common challenge would be resistance from a perpetrator in terms of being defensive, being stubborn or not being apologetic. Another common challenge would be communication difficulties, for example, a language barrier or just managing a sensitive issue like this could be, it's just very hard by itself as well. Some of those ways that, you know, when they tried to confront the perpetrator, the whole situation escalated into a conflict, which, and then, you know, harsh words that were exchanged, emotions like anger gets involved and then it doesn't help the whole situation as well. So how then can we improve our in-support and intervention measures? So our respondents actually indicated that they were satisfied when they were assured, when they felt listened to, when they were given referrals, when they were given advice and they were unsatisfied when they were not listened, of course, when they were guessed like that. So guess lighting refers to, you know, questioning the respondent or the victim, you know, are you sure you feel that way? Are you sure it's offensive? You know, things like that. Minimising and dismissing, for example, saying things like, it's not no big deal, just continue on with your life. Don't make a big thing out of nothing, things like that. And they also indicated that law enforcement officers should demonstrate several different traits, for example, being objective, neutral and fair, being able to mediate the situation sensitively, demonstrating active listening skills, that's very important as well, and enforcing a punishment when need be, and last but not least, to investigate the situation thoroughly. In terms of the effectiveness of our current interventions, thankfully, most of them actually were rated as effective. But I just wanted to highlight that our younger respondents tend to perceive laws as less effective. So this may potentially signal that, you know, younger respondents have different experiences or are facing different needs, which I will cover later on. Okay, so again, here's a summary of the key findings in terms of prevalence and management and intervention. So then, you know, it boils down to the final question of what can we do to, you know, help this whole phenomenon? Okay, so first and foremost, you know, one recommendation would be in the form of each specific interventions. So because younger respondents actually reported that they experienced more hate incidents as well as they felt more vulnerable and felt a higher internal anxiety. So this was not mentioned earlier because of time constraints. But basically, you know, all these may signal that they have different, that they are, there may be different victim needs and thus interventions would then have to be tailored to address these age-specific gaps. So future research can actually explore, constantly exploring these differences at a deeper level, you know, finding out what is the difference between the different generations and how then can we feel in these differences? Secondly, we also can have enhanced training for our law enforcement officers. So as mentioned earlier, you know, there are several key traits that are being expected in law enforcement officers and they are also expected to de-escalate and mitigate a hate incident. So being trained on that is very important, you know, things like active listening skills will come in, being aware of our own biases, we have to be, to be obvious on us any other day, everyone will have our own biases about how do we correct for them, how do we monitor them, yeah. Interestingly, in victims, some respondents also mentioned that they may prefer to interact with an officer of the same race or region because it's just easier to communicate with someone of the same group as well. And last but not least, officers should also be educated or knowledgeable about the different kinds of resources that are available out there so that they can refer or redirect victims accordingly. And finally, we also have concrete, we also recommend giving concrete tips on how to manage hate incidents. Because most of our respondents did not attempt to resolve a hate incident during, because of the many challenges and concrete tips will help them overcome such challenges. For example, here we have a worksheet on how to call out and call in biases. So call out refers to, you know, telling the perpetrator that, no, this is not acceptable and how will you do that? Call in, on the other hand, will be trying to understand together with the perpetrator, you know, why do we have different perspectives? How do we overcome this together, things like that? And every day, you know, the whole aim of this is to raise awareness and tackle the stigma that victims of hate incidents should just tolerate them silently, which should not be the case. So again, here's a summary of the different recommendations that we have gone through. And that's all that I have for today's presentation. Thank you so much for your kind attention. Please let me know if you have any questions, we can address them at a Q and A session at the end or you may direct them to my email as shown here, thank you.
Thank you Ting Min for the interesting presentation. So this presentation has certainly led us to rethink about the experiences of hate incidents in Singapore as well as showing us some interesting demographic differences in this entire incident process. Once again, as a reminder to our audience, do post any questions or comments that you may have for the presentations via the Q and A tech. And the next presentation we have is by Dr Omar Ali Saifuddin. Dr Omar is a senior lecturer in the Public Safety and Security Programme, School of Humanities and Behavioural Sciences, Singapore University of Social Sciences. Before joining academia full-time, Dr Omar served for twenty-five years in the Singapore Civil Service in various departments such as the Central Narcotics Bureau, CND, the Home Team Academy, HDA as well as the National Security Coordination Secretary at NSCS at the Prime Minister's Office, Singapore. Dr Omar's expertise is in researching counter-violent extremism, global and regional security reassessments and analysis, internal and external security track detection as well as criminal investigations. And for his presentation, he will be covering the rapid progression of global conspiracies related to the COVID nineteen pandemic, which has actually reached Singaporeans via social media and the internet. And as such, it subsequently influenced how local narratives against the COVID nineteen vaccines came about. And we have also witnessed as a result of this kind of narratives, how some Singaporeans have actually mobilised to form online social movements against the vaccine. And this oral presentation will construct this ever-evolving anti-vaccine narratives online. So without further ado, we'll begin the presentation, Dr Omar, please.
Welcome to my presentation for ACOB, entitled Going Down the Rabbit Hole, The Nexus of Singaporean Anti-Vaxxer Disinformation Themes. So what I'll be presenting as the title suggested is that we're going to take a deep dive into the anti-vaxxer movements in Singapore. Basically, look at their various themes they use to spread their narratives and why it basically gains traction. But to do this, we also have to take a look at the wider ecosystem of anti-vaxxer disinformation as well and where it actually comes from. So let's begin our journey then. Now, to really understand anti-vaxxer movements, we also need to understand and online conspiracy movements. They've been around for a long time. There are various forms of them and basically the internet has created this kind of realm in which all these fringe ideas can thrive. You know, it's seen as the best deed of free speech where everyone can say what they want, almost, you know, and you can have a movement just about for any particular cause, you know, gain traction on online platforms. And Yogan Habermas, in his Theory of Communicative Action, he described what is known as the ideal speech situation in which there exists a environment in which people are able to have unrestricted, unrestricted critical discourse between two parties without having any power dynamics getting in the way. And supposedly, the internet represents this, I mean, it creates this impression that, you know, you can have that ideal speech situation happening on online platforms. People feel that they are pretty much liberated on the internet. We also need to keep in mind the idea that today, youth are more into peripheral or heuristic processing. We make decisions, I mean, most, most youth make decisions using shortcuts, shortcuts to decision-making. So instead of actually going through central processing, you know, checking through sources, checking through one information after another, they just rely on perhaps crowdsourced information, all right? Of what they can Google up and so on and so forth, you know. So the information that you get is of course going to be very fast, but it may not necessarily be the most accurate. And it has given rights to what are known as truth-seeker movements. They are basically reconstruction of, reconstructions of online conspiracy movements, of conspiracy movements. Truth-seeker movements pitch themselves as those who are able to, you know, dissect online conspiracies, sorry, dissect any kind of conspiracies by a powerful elite, all right? That could represent even the state and so on and so forth. And they value themselves as critical thinkers, we need to keep this in mind, all right? They can, they value themselves as people who can see past the rules and reveal the truth of what it is. And so they have a kind of a very noble moral cause to reveal the truths, all right? This, of course, empowers them, gives them a sense of purpose and value and so on and so forth. But this is what we are seeing happening on the internet as well. Does anyone do something about it? Of course they do. But no one bothers to read the fact-check website or the narratives of the fact-checkers, all right? There is this idea in cognitive science called the illusory truth effect in which if you take a lie and you spread it often enough, all right, that gets represented as the truth, all right? So repetition and volume actually play a big part. And it has also been proven that fake news or misinformation spreads far, much faster than information that represent the actual truth or counterclaim and so on, all right? So what makes a good online conspiracy? Cherry picking, all right? Just pick the facts that only support that view, all right? And of course, it needs a tie to existing grievances that someone might have, all right? Against a particular group or the state and so on and so forth. So if you're already distrustful of the state, all you need is one more narrative to show how distrustful the state is, all right? It has to trigger an emotion, all right? And when it triggers an emotion that is, that is pricks on someone's moral conscience and so on and so forth, that adds to the overall effect, all right? And it also helps that that narrative comes from people that they trust, rather than just a general news article and so on and so forth. All right, in Singapore, what do we see? Okay, a number of anti-vaxxer platforms have risen, all right? This is an example of one. You've heard of platforms such as Healing the Divide and what they tried to do in terms of swamping hotlines and so on and so forth. And this is another one out there, there's another one out on Telegram known as SG Vaccine Injuries. Now, in terms of numbers, we saw that they were, many of these groups existed on multiple platforms. Now, just to give you an idea of some of these numbers. Let me just pull up some stats so that you can take a look at what some of these numbers basically represent. Now, do you remember the Telegram channel for the, for the groups Healing the Divide? They had a number of Telegram channels, they had two in fact. One of them had about, at first glance, when I took at it, five thousand five hundred and seventeen. The other one had three thousand four hundred members. Now, the other group, SG Suspected Vaccine Injuries on Telegram, they had two channels as well. One of them had fourteen thousand two hundred and forty-six, the other one had nine thousand five hundred and sixty-eight members. And I realised that many of these groups exist on multiple platforms as well, each of them having significant numbers along these lines as well. It's not entirely possible to, to figure out the full value, the the full value and, sorry, the full scale of the disinformation movement in Singapore per se. But just looking at these separate numbers, the cumulative effect is quite significant. In some form or fashion, someone is bound to encounter one of these channels. Now, if you look at the front page of the Truth Warriors website, this is what it looks like. You can, you can see the kind of impression that they are trying to create. Again, this whole idea of the noble truth-seeker, all right? Trying to expose the conspiracy and they are seen as the vanguards of the movement and so on. Now, take a look at a sample narrative from one of the speakers, or one of the members. And this is how they basically perceive a discerned truth. I'll just read it out to you. It's simply because we know people around us who died suffer from severe side effects more than we hear about people around us who really got COVID nineteen and suffered from it. Now, the subtext to this is that, this is what I see, this is my experiential, this is my experience. And my experience is far more important and that experience includes what I hear from my trusted peers. And that experience includes what I hear from my trusted peers, far more important than what is the evidence that is out there, all right? So this is how they discern. And that's kind of scary, because just combine that with a number of good-natured memes and, what do you call it, humorous memes and anecdotes and so on and so forth, and create this notion of a close-knit community that supports each other against any kind of pushback. You have a very entrenched and dedicated individual who will push for these narratives. Now, has anything been done? Of course, yes, two of the articles for the truth-seeker, sorry, this Truth Warriors website were actually pohmatt, all right? A pohma was issued on them and correction order, correction notice. But it is just two out of an entire, the number of articles, when I went in to take a look, currently, it stands at sixty-four. Two out of sixty-four articles have a correction order. Now, remember, this idea of the backfire effect and cognitive biases, you know, the more you go into an community that is already entrenched in its beliefs, and you come up with contrary information, they will actually dig in even deeper, all right? They will see it as state overreached, the kind of state repression they'd been always warned about, you know? So what it does is that, even though you see the two correction notices, when you actually look at the website, that is still access to the original article, all right? In some ways, in some odd way, may possibly even create more attention to these articles. But the thing is, this is what we can do at present. And, and we also need to keep in mind this issue of volume and the nature, sorry, the kind of world, entrenched worldviews that you're trying to, to correct. But it's a first step, and it's a very much needed step. Now, I took a look at all the narrative themes that are, that can be seen in, in many of these local anti-vaxxer platforms, and I came up with basically six that are the most dominant. One is, of course, the idea of expert voices, there are plenty of articles that, that, whether they are pseudo-experts and so on and so forth, plenty of articles that cite experts that are against the idea of the vaccine, alternative studies that have been taken, that are actually based on legitimate studies taken out of context and misconstrued, or actual alternative studies that are just based on cherry-picked information and statistics, all right? Likewise, statistics that are very slanted, all right, that only represent one side of the picture and so on. Plenty of articles that, that also introduce far-fetched ideas of a conspiracy to silence and how this article or this study is part of a hidden exposé to reveal the truth and so on. Some of this based on moral arguments. They try to tap on this idea that the vaccines hurt the most vulnerable, such as children and so on. And of course, combine that with snippets of sensational humorous emotive quotes and memes, the culminative effect of all these type of different themes is very powerful, all right? Let me illustrate this. This is one narrative that was being passed around about saving the children. And it was based on Luxembourg Parliament hearing in which a Dr. Christian Peron was asked to speak, and of course, he was very critical about it and, and the effect that it may have on children and so on. Now, of course, when this was passed along, the headlines spoke along the lines of European Parliament is against the Covid nineteen vaccine, something along that line. Of course, that's not actually what happened. All they did was they gave a platform for him to speak, and that's it, all right? And he was described as the Vice President of the World Health Organization in these anti-vaxxer narratives that were spread. But if you look at the fact-check article by Reuters, it shows that that's not, that's not who he is, all right? He was never the former Vice President of W H O, but simply a member of an advisory group, all right, for the W H O. So you can see how, you know, you can see how it's just a matter of stretching the truth that they do as well. And how do you basically counter that? We need to teach our youth, it's got to go beyond media literacy, but what kind of media literacy we are talking about, all right? And what kind of critical thinking? It's got to, we got to tell our youth to go beyond headlines and summaries. Stop making those snap judgments just based on surface attributes. Do source checks, date checks, and sometimes it gets very difficult, yes. With all the various technologies that are involved, it's very hard to distinguish what is actually the truth. But you can discern the agenda or the, or the intent of that narrative. It could be to polarize, to spread hate, to cause suspicion against the state, and so on and so forth. So then you know that that this is a slanted article towards this objective. Critical thinking also involves checking your own biases and worldviews, all right? It's not just about critically looking at an article and doing one's own fact-checking. So these are the kind of things that we should be inculcating in our youth. So in conclusion, this is what we are seeing. Knowing what is the truth is getting even harder. It's very hard to discern between fact and truth these days. And sometimes it's not about the truth, but about the impressions the narrative creates. It's all about the theater and the agenda, all right? So we are living in a world where we see snippets ruling, your audience making snap judgments based simply on slanted and cherry-picked content. And of course, who gets to say it? There used to be a time, if you were to stand up, to have a platform to say something, you have to go through a number of checks. The information you're going to talk about is going to go through a peer review, so to speak, and then you can finally talk about it. But anyone on the internet can be a citizen journalist now, all right? So you, you have the rise of misinformation entrepreneurs and pseudo-experts online, and this is what we need to fight against.
Thank you, Dr. Omar, for the very interesting presentation. So this presentation has certainly led us to think further about the online conspiracy movement as a phenomenon, as well as the dangers of cherry-picking cognitive biases and emotions involved in creating this ideological frames. So with that, we have come to the end of this very special session. So we would like to move on to the Q and A segment for the remainder of the session. So we'd like to remind the audience again to please also add in your questions at the Q and A segment. And we'd like to invite the presenters into the online virtual space for the Q and A segment. Okay, so, Dr. Omar, Timmy, a very excellent presentation. I thoroughly enjoyed them. Maybe I don't see any questions coming in yet, so I think we'll start some of my personal questions. So maybe I'll first direct it to Dr. Omar. So, given your sharing on this anti-vaccination narratives, do you have any speculation or any views about how this kind of themes that identify, how could they exercise in something even more problematic? What are your views on these things?
Well, Ken, you, you asked just the perfect question, because those themes that I mentioned earlier on, you know, they don't represent everything. In fact, what, what we've been seeing over the months, and you know, the Covid situation has had its ebbs and flows, and, and now we've reached a rather interesting phase in which you can breathe the air, step outside and breathe the air, you know? So there's this impression that, hey, everything's okay now, you can go traveling and all that, I'm still waiting for my passport, but yeah, you know, everything's okay. Now, the movement has not died down. The, the themes, there are three themes that are actually growing, and it's been growing for quite a while. One of the first themes was this idea of discrimination, all right? The anti-vaxxers are portraying this idea that, that, look at the injustice that is being done onto us. Look at how unfairly we are being treated. And there are even like little Instagram posts where they said, I used to be a civil servant for so long, but look what has happened to me, and, and so on and so forth. We see this theme of discrimination coming out more than even talking about the vaccine per se, or about the statistics or the science behind it and so on and so forth. You can see where this is leading towards. And there's two more themes. The second one is that even the, those who are vaccinated are, what do you call it, on our side? And then, of course, any kind of grievance against the state is being associated with it. Do you see how it's becoming a confluence of other things coming into the picture and not just about the vaccine? And the last one is, is rather interesting, because certain individuals actually have tried to challenge the issue based on the, on the constitution of Singapore. They've actually tried to sue the government. They actually put legal challenges against the government, and they're saying, look, we are powerful as well. We can challenge the government, and look at the people who are in our community. We have doctors, we have professionals, we have lawyers supporting us. We are forced to be reckoned with. Do you see the hidden message that is going out? And that's very dangerous. There are many, if you extrapolate this, it's quite worrying.
Thank you. So as I think you described, there's a problem of very narcissistic, the movement getting narcissistic in itself, and actually believing that they are so right that they may actually escalate into real-life actions. So thank you very much for your sharing, Dr. Omar. So I think I'll divert a bit back to Timmy. So there's one of the questions that have come in already. So thanking you for your presentation. And some people have actually argued, there's a reason why youths may appear to be more affected by such incidences, because they are more quote-unquote sensitive. And people have even thought this used to be part of this snowflake generation. So, so the question that comes about is, is there any reason why there's this kind of differences in age groups? So, Timmy, over to you.
Thanks, Ken. Thanks for the wonderful question, and I believe it's also the million-dollar question in the room, right? You know, what is the difference that we are, what can explain the difference that we are seeing between the youth's perspective versus the older generations' perspective? And maybe to, just to provide some context for the rest of the audiences as well, not just in this study, in other studies done, local studies done by I P S as well, they found that, you know, younger individuals, they tend, they are more likely to see racism as an important problem as compared to the older generations. Yeah, and actually, one possible reason that the researchers state was that younger generations, younger people, they are spending more time online and online spaces. This is where, you know, we have heated discussions, we have a lot of heated discussions about the different, you know, R and I race and religious incidents, or it could be, you know, people sharing their own experiences. And all these results, you know, these issues becoming made, are being made more visible to us as well. And so that's one possible reason. Another possible reason is like what the post, the user who posted, who posted this question mentioned, you know, sensitivity. So, you know, I hesitate to make a judgment about who is right, you know? Is someone being oversensitive or is someone being insensitive? But at the end of the day, what we are observing, you know, there's this, there seems to be this, you know, social phenomenon where people are just becoming more, you know, aware, more, paying more attention to issues like, you know, equality, human rights, and other issues as well. So we don't, we don't just see this in Singapore, we see this overseas as well, in different, in other countries. And one possible reason again is that, you know, societies are developing, yeah, our living conditions are improving, and because of this, you know, it actually can result in a possible shift of focus from something that is more physical, you know, being concerned about our physical well, our physical safety, to something that is a bit more emotional, you know, our emotional well-being, things like that. And that's why, you know, if you recall the heat pyramid, we are also moving our attention lower down the pyramid, you know? At the top, you have things like murder, terrorism, these are clear-cut, you know, security reasons, security concerns, sorry. But we're going down the pyramid, we are also concerned about the, you know, seemingly innocuous forms of hate, you know, things like insensitive remarks, because these can hurt people's feelings. Yeah, so I hope that that answered the question, yeah.
Thanks, Timmy. So thank you for sharing like how, like a possible historical view about what, why these kind of things can shift over time and for our society. So I think we have time for one last question. I think I'll open it up to both parties, Dr. Omar and Timmy. It's like, this question is about, like, what kind of structures do we need in government or in society to deal with these issues that you have rightly pointed out, issues of problematic misinformation from online anti-vaxxers, or even in the other end of the problematic information space, which is, is actually the problem of hate speech or these kind of things? So maybe, Dr. Omar, would you like to comment about any kind of structures you think would be relevant or necessary?
This, it's a very pertinent question, and it's, it's not new. I mean, people have been asking this for quite some time. And, and you know, we are still trying to grapple our way through some of these issues, but there are two perspectives to this. And I think, Jin Ming, you mentioned that, you know, when in your survey, some of them felt as if, you know, why not just let it pass? You know, just do nothing. You know, I mean, if the more you, the more you press the button and the more you make it salient, it may actually get worse. But here's the thing, people need to be seen and heard. And when you face a certain injustice, to be asked to just sort of, yes, that is one way, but it doesn't just go away. They remember. And then when it's reinforced by microaggressions and so on and so forth, it does build mass. So one of the things that have been talked about is this idea of safe spaces, you know? We have our way of dealing with this, in which we have these closed-door conversations in which people can actually voice their views, their grievances, and have these safe spaces basically to, to deal with what happened and to come up with constructive solutions on what to do moving forward. Ideas of even forgiveness, ideas of even bringing people who have, what do you call it, who have actually offended with regard, as you know, the Maintenance of Religious and Racial Harmony Act, that there have been amendments that have worked towards this idea of rehabilitation, you know? The idea of, can you sort of, the perpetrator, expose him to, him or her to another world, to another perspective? You know, it's easy to just sort of just charge people and just throw the book at them and all that, but you, you don't solve the problem per se. But it's all about doing things the hard way sometimes, having those hard conversations, have, taking that extra step to actually bring them back to the fore and telling them that, that some things that you have not seen, and don't be, don't be blinded by all the biases that you've been exposed to for so long. It starts with a conversation. It starts with a new experience, so stuff like that. Sorry, it's not a perfect solution, Ken. Over to you, Jin Ming. I mean, I'm sure you can build on this.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Omar. Actually, I totally agree with your point about having the hard conversations, because at the end of the day, you know, there's only so much that our laws can do, the government can do, right? But of course, we have laws in place, right? So the newly enforced law, I think it was last year, yeah? So it's, I think it's called the Maintenance, Maintenance of Racial Harmony Act, right? So this actually is going towards a more, you know, a restorative approach. So, you know, things like, you know, what Dr. Omar mentioned about forgiveness, you know, bringing the people, you know, having conversations with them, understanding why they perceive certain things in certain ways, and not just, you know, oh, okay, just lock you behind bars, because at the end of the day, that's, the limitations are, you know, will be that you may not actually, you know, teach them, you know, the, what, the different perspectives that they are missing out here right now. Yeah, so maybe other than structures or laws, we are also very interested in, on the individual level, you know, what can be as individuals do. So again, you know, based on the survey, right? We have found that most of them, they tend not to do anything, they tend to, because they tend to face challenges, they are not sure how they can resolve issues, how they can resolve hate incidents by themselves. So maybe we, at an organizational level, we can consider how we can help them out, you know, help individuals out, trying to find a path in trying to resolve a hate incidence on their own as well. Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Omar and Timmy. It's like, we have covered like two very interesting segments of things. One is about how to get individuals ready for this kind of events itself, and Dr. Omar sharing about the importance of safe spaces. It looks like the comment section is also growing in terms of interest, but unfortunately, we have also run out of time. So you, we ask that anyone, if you have your questions, please feel free to just email the speakers directly via their contact. So thank you all. We have come to the end of our Q and A session. So I'd like to join, invite everyone to join me in thanking our presenters for sharing with us their research and perspectives. And I'm sure we have gained quite a lot of insight into the issue of extremism, hate and disinformation during the session.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so next up, we'll have, we'll be having a two-hour break, and we'll resume promptly at eight P M. So during the break, please enjoy the videos that have been prepared by the AICOP Organizing Committee. So it's an exciting video series called Inside Out, where you hope to give everyone sneak peek into the different areas of work that home team psychologists are involved in. So for today, we'll be featuring our work in crisis support and Covid response. And after the break, we will have a keynote address. For today, the keynote address will be presented by Mr. Chiang Aung Hua, and we seek your understanding in rejoining us on And we seek your understanding in rejoining us on this platform ten to fifteen minutes before the keynote presentation starts. So with that, I would like to thank everyone for your time. Uh thank you very much.